Now without delay, I want to start our next special session on defense strategy and human security. Thank you, our collaborator, Department of Defense and Strategic Studies, Himachal Pradesh University Shimla India, for organizing this special session. I want to invite Chairperson Professor Harish Kumar Thakur, who is Chairman, Department of Defense and Strategic Studies, Himachal Pradesh University Shimla, to take over the session. And also, a co-chairperson, Dr. Ashok Kumar, who is Assistant Professor at Department of Defense and Strategic Studies, Himachal Pradesh University. And Vinesh Betia, who is Assistant Professor in the same department. Before starting the session, just one request to all persons, panelists, that please make sure that you end your presentation in five minutes because we have thirty-three presenters here and we have to end this session by two o'clock. So, over to you sir, Professor Harish Thakur.
Thank you very much, Nandini. Am I audible? Should I start?
Yes sir.
First of all, I would congratulate Nandini Basista ji for going such a wonderful, carrying out such a wonderful international conference and giving us, the Department of Defense and Strategic Studies, Himachal Pradesh University and our team, the opportunity to join this international conference. So, on behalf of the department and my colleagues, Dr. Ashok and Professor Vinesh, I once again thank you for giving us the opportunity. Since the number of participants are, the number is quite high, thirty-three, so we suppose that if there are about twenty-five presentations, then even five minutes appear to be a little longer. So, I hope that the coaches of Vinesh and Ashok, they will be restricting the presentations well in time. But we can't even deny any participant this opportunity because everyone wants to add to the knowledge and earn something from this intellectual activity. So, from the defense perspective, I would begin with the traditional view of security that we have been into. Very recently with the United Nations Development Programme nineteen ninety-four, for the first time, the idea of security was extended to certain other dimensions. Otherwise, traditionally, we have been into the institutionalized nature or the structured nature of security. And people used to believe that the security is something that concerns the state and the security of state is an end in itself. So, it was a traditional view and international politics also, the students of political science are also aware that the classical realist Morgan Theo and company and even the later progenies like Kenneth Fals and others, they stick up to the argument that the institutional and structured nature of security is more relevant than the security at individual level. But then, there has been a sea transformation in understanding of the perspective of security. And UNDP in nineteen ninety-four, for the first time, tried to extend the idea of security to the other important questions of human life, the question of livelihood, good health and the cost of right to development was in talk. And then besides the rights to liberty and equality. And as we all know, that Article Three of United Nations Declaration on Human Rights was also concerned about security as it declares security together with liberty and equality as the fundamental right. So, security at the center place, it is nice that the idea of security has got its real meaning into the political and intellectual discussions and in UN discussions. And Kofi Annan, the former Secretary General, at one stage, he also sought the attention towards the idea. And then there are related issues like environment and health issues and CO2 emission, for which India has at Glasgow made a very strict commitment that by two thousand fifty, India is going to restrict. Then immediately, the other theme, the sub-theme of this conference is good governance. And governance, how governance could execute the idea of security in its proper dimension? So, here theoretically taking, I would give one instance of Paul Kennedy's volume that he published, I think somewhere in two thousand six, in which he, the title of the volume was United Nations, The Parliament of States. In the beginning, he somewhere remarks and he quotes the Loxley Hall poem by Tennyson. In that poem, there was an imaginary state conceived by the poet in which he speaks about a kind of federal society, the kind of idea that was rooted by even Jahalal Nehru in nineteen thirty-nine when he spoke about the Confederation of the States, where states would maintain their sovereignty. But to maintain the interstate relationship and interstate order and peace, it would be the duty of the world government. So, in the similar fashion, Tennyson had also conceived a world. So, Paul Kennedy also somewhere finds that the clue to this, the decentralization of authority and the decentralization of right and the execution and the protection of security rights of individual, they come through a federal kind of society. The same thing, very recently, the public intellectual Fukuyama, you must have gone through in his volume Identity, he speaks about the identity crisis, he takes it to the individual level. Just like Gandhi, Gandhi considered man as a moral man. Fukuyama considers, he takes the human activity, the concerns for right to the mental plane where he argues that man is down with the ideas of megalithmia, hypothermia, certain terms he used from the Platonic mind, Plato's idea of mind, he derives these terms. And the individual desire to attain dignity and he uses the term dignity as a representative of the right to liberty, right to equality and right to security and right to development. So, all these rights are represented by dignity and if you are denied any single right out of it, that means your dignity has been compromised. So, how to secure this dignity at social level and at individual level? And how to maintain harmony between the individual dignity and the individual security in the society and the interests of the state and the interests of the individuals? So, how the two peripheries of individual and state activity have to be harmonized and integrated into an orderly system is the question that Fukuyama deals and he suggests. Just like the students of political science might be remembering, recalling the theory of Ernest Gartner, who said that we have to develop civil structures, civil codes, civil services with the help of which we can dilute the narrow ethnic or social questions, we can minimize their effect and impact on the social and political processes. And we can generate secular and civil culture in the society that can bind up the whole society and different communities and diversities into a single system. So, it is a very fundamental question we all are faced with today and the more hazardous prospects we see through the artificial intelligence as the power, Yuval Harari would also say that in next fifty-sixty years, many is going to face these technological questions and a substantial section of human society will turn redundant or will turn, just like in COVID, the world got constrained or limited to a particular space. So, and another section which won't have the reach outreach to this technological benefit or the technology, so there will be another kind of rift in society. So, that appears to be a major question of human security in the coming times. And we believe that just like Indian commitment and the commitment by European states that they are going to, from pollution point of view, the health question is also associated with it, that the countries are by two thousand fifty, they are going to limit the, they are going to bring the level to zero level of carbon emission. And China goes, one of the biggest contributor, China, it has given the commitment of nineteen sixty. So, it will happen through the governance and commitments from the leaders, commitments from different governments that how we can make this planet safe. And as we all know, that small girl Kreta Thunberg also questioned these commitments that and she held that these politicians are just pretending about the future of we children. So, the new generation represented by Kreta or the new generation represented by different young leaders, they feel insecure out of the narrow dimensions of security which have been followed by state, what is happening in Europe, we all know. So, the unilateral imposition of solution to the territorial questions is again a big challenge. So, this falls in the traditional ambit of understanding of security. So, we have to take a comprehensive look of security and deal it accordingly in which the good governance, the good and bad are secondary. First, governance and effective governance is required. It is not always that a democratic state performs better than a dictatorial state in executing certain programs, the dictatorial authoritarian states perform far better than democratic states. So, it will remain again a debatable question whether democracy is better or authoritarian state is better. Good governance always depends upon the performance and the effectiveness of the government. So, this, the question of security and the effectiveness and the governance, the level of governance of the government, they are integrated and we have to come out with the certain measures with which the security dimension and the related rights or the what Fukuyama calls the question of dignity is addressed properly. So, I won't take much time, I would suggest the coaches of the session, Dr. Ashok and Professor Vinesh, that let us start the activity. We have a lot, lots of presenters, thirty-three. So, you have to deal accordingly and don't allow participants more than five-six minutes. Otherwise, the whole schedule will get disturbed as just like the previous session, it overextended up to next ten minutes. So, I hope that all the participants will enjoy this session. And once again, on behalf of the faculty of Department, faculty of Department of Defense and Strategic Studies, Himachal Pradesh University, I once again thank Nandini Basista, who is Executive Director of Interdisciplinary Institute of Human Security and Governance. Once again, many, many thanks, Nandini, and best wishes for the conference. Thank you very much.
Thank you sir.
Thank you so much sir. Esteemed the panelists, am I audible?
Yes, Ashok ji, you are audible.
Esteemed the panelists, my colleague on the board, ladies and gentlemen, once again, a very warm welcome and good morning to all of you to the International Conference organized by II HST with collaboration of various renowned institutions across the globe. And it gives me an immense pleasure that Department of Defense and Strategic Studies at Shimla is part of this creative event, despite most of us are basically due to COVID-nineteen pandemic. And we also hope you and your families are healthy and safe at your places. And thank you so much for joining us today. As before we commence the proceedings, may I introduce my colleague on the board, Doctor Abirishan Badia, who will be with me on this journey with you all. And I, without any delay, I invite, very first, as a special request has been made by Sujay Kundra, who is going to present paper on the role of adult education and curbing the tradition of witch hunting in the state of Jharkhand. He is a research scholar, Mahatma Gandhi Central University, Bihar. And a special, again a humble request to all the participants and the presenters, please explain through the five minutes presentation and otherwise we will have to interrupt. Sujay Kundra.
Yeah, good morning sir.
Over to you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for allowing, considering my request. I have a little problem today, so that's why I am requested to give me this slot beginning of the session. So, thank you very much and can you allow me to share my screen? Yes sir, now you can share your screen. Thank you.
Is it visible? Hello?
No sir, not yet.
Is it visible sir, ma'am?
Sir, I think you should put your camera on first, then we can see you. Thank you.
Now it is visible?
My presentation?
It's not visible.
Shall I start without my things? I think it's getting problem.
Please go on.
Yeah, thank you, myself Sujay Kundra, I'm a research scholar in Mahatma Gandhi Central University. My today's topic is the role of adult education in curbing the tradition of witch hunting in the state of Jharkhand, India. So, here in my content, in this paper, an attempt is made to examine the reasons, consequences and measures taken to address the problem of witch hunting. So, here I have taken these five sections, that is introduction, reasons, consequences, measures and conclusions. So, first I want to share that, how can we say that, that we are the modern and developed? When thousand of that illiterate tribal women are branded as witches, every year and hundreds are killed. The principles of the gender equality has been inscribed in Constitution of India. Although women can be victim of any of the general crimes such as murder, robbery etcetera, but there are some gender specific crimes which are being characterized as a crime against women, more specifically labeled as violence against women. The fear of the violence can prevent women from pursuing education, working or exercising their political rights and voice. So, how can we say that the women are the witches? So, who is witch? The individual branded as a witch is often a woman and generally belong to the low caste and tribes. This social crime of hunting is more rooted in the superstitions and the belief systems of the societies rather. This act is committed by the convenience of a few people who conspire against disadvantaged, vulnerable, innocent, gullible, illiterate tribal women, grabbing their land, animal money for personal revenge or even sexual favors. These atrocities are committed in the name of purging the society of a witch. Witch hunting, which are the common phenomena in the state of Jharkhand, which is located in the eastern part of India. Witch hunting in Jharkhand, there are only a few studies on witchcraft which hunts in India. None of them focus on the incidents and its consequences in Jharkhand rather. It identifies economic conditions, particularly the property disputes among families, disease and illness, village level politics and gender conflicts as the leading cause of witch hunting. The literature suggests both micro and macro factors as responsible for the persecutions of women. Second, the place of the tribal communities within it make it distinctive case, different from other communities. So, here is the reasons, there are the four reasons I have mentioned in my paper, research paper, that is women and property. One of the few anthropologists studying witch hunts in contemporary Bengal claims that witch hunts are a form of persecution towards women, especially widow who are marginalized and gradually excluded from society. Witch hunts in India are mainly caused due to the struggle for property involving widow and husband schemes. The women who are accused, the mostly childless widows who have a life interest in the land that will pass on to their nearest male relative after their death. The second points is village level politics, gender classes and witches. Two major functions of witch hunts, first witch hunts provides a convenience pretext for the rich and powerful men to get rid of any women who causes the men's political, oppose the men politically. And second, it is helpful in avoiding social scandal to get rid of unwanted female. Widows, women with illicit pregnancies, it is though the jan guru who is called the witch doctor, witches are identified. Village level politics provided active support in the hunt of witches. Typically, women from a rival feuding family are labeled as witches. The third one, the third reason is the social structure and the gender roles. According to the National Family Survey, at least sixty-seven point five percent children between six to fifty-nine months were anemic in Jharkhand. In two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one, at least sixty-five point seven percent non-pregnant women between fifteen and forty-nine years age suffered from anemic in the tribal state. It is the statement given by the Telegraph online. Women in Jharkhand live in the very awesomely disempowered situations. According to the two thousand eleven census, that literacy rate of Jharkhand is sixty-six point four one percent, which is seven percent lower from the national literacy level. There is the extreme low literacy level of women in the state. In two thousand eleven census, literacy rate was fifty-five point four two percent for women, more than twenty percent lower than the male government of Jharkhand. According to the NCRB, National Crime Report Bureau, two thousand sixteen female trafficking has been documented in India in a total of one thousand one hundred eighty-three cases. So, there is the crime rate of point nine in Jharkhand, the most occurrence of female trafficking with one thirty-seven cases for the year two thousand sixteen. So, the fourth reason was the witchcraft and the witch power. It is.
Yeah, try to find in the one.
Yeah, sure. So, sure now I'm coming to my measures. There is an anti-witch hunting law on October twenty nineteen ninety-nine that Bihar State Assembly pronounced the widely anticipated law against witch hunting, Anti-Witch Hunting Act, named as Dain Pratha Pratishad Aviyan nineteen ninety-nine. The State Cabinet of Jharkhand in its seventeenth meeting on the third July two thousand one approved for adoption of the Bihar Anti-Witch Hunting Act, namely it is Dain Pratha Pratishad Aviyan two thousand one. So, there is a many incidents in this twenty-two years, there was more than thousand people have been murdered due to these superstitions. So, there is needed for the empowerment of the tribal women through adult education. When the mass literacy and the mass awareness will be there, so the women can be know about their rights and where to go for the laws, their complaint. So, that is a very much essential sensitive things, but nowadays we have to do for the women here. So, here is some recommendation, so I'm jumping this recommendation. And after that, the conclusion part. So, here the tribal dominated Jharkhand, such incidents happen day and day out in age of the space voyage and the missiles is such, social calamities can take place. One has to seriously ponder about the state of affairs in the civilized human society. So, we can say that adult literacy education is the unique shot of education that necessitates specialized program design and policy concern. Literacy learning bests out the quality education which improves the inner dignity and self-esteem. In this more show, the tribal women, adult education plays a significant role in the achievement of the sustained livelihood and increase better economic in the family. So, we see that education lead to the self-reliance both psychologically and economically. For this, we need to empower only through adult education with this achievement, the objective of sustainable development goal that is number one for and ten. Party provide quality education and reduce inequality will be achieved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sanju Kundra, for your wonderful presentation on the Jharkhand women's and definitely there is many more to do on the work. And we will be more than happy to read your full paper and really sorry to interrupt you in between. So, thank you so much for your wonderful presentation. Over to you.
Next presenter, we have Suliman Basif. Do we have Suliman Basif here?
Can you hear me loud and clear?
Yeah, yeah. Suliman Basir.
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, yeah. Your topic is he is going to present his topic, presentation on security challenges and government responses in northern Nigeria from ninety nine to thousand ninety.
Please go ahead. Yes, sir. Okay. Can you hear me loud and clear?
Yeah, loud and clear.
Okay, the aim of this, the aim of this, my presentation is to present the scenario of the challenges that are there in the northeastern part of Nigeria from nineteen ninety nine to twenty nineteen. Is it okay? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, oh, the background is that the aim is to phrase the genesis of the continuous struggle to maintain peace and restore normalcy within the northeastern part of Nigeria. This transformation or these efforts from the year nineteen ninety nine started with Nigeria ushered in a new democratic government. This democracy normally it comes with the guarantee of fundamental human rights, freedom of speech, freedom of speech and expression of opinion and also freedom of religion. So some ostre plus elements within the polity and even outside the Nigerian state within the northeastern part of Nigeria capitalize on such issues as freedom of rights, freedom of expression of opinion, freedom of association and other fundamental human rights to learn, attack and do whatever they want to do. So the method employed is the so the method here employed is that various data collected in order to do this, in order to do various data collected in order to make this restroom right up possible is that we rely heavily on on security reports, the victims of the violence and the records from international security organizations such as the United Nations and the United Nations Council on Security. So the result has shown that there the procurement of security gadgets, training and retraining of training and retraining of personnel. So also gathering of information and intelligence information from both national and international level will create a kind of a circle to the bring bring about an improvement in this situation. So definitely the security of this area, northeastern part of Nigeria is not only based on political or kind of rights that is so people capitalize upon in order to perpetuate all their activities. But rather it has taken another new dimension. This time, this this time is not it's not about this this time is not about, this time is not about enforcing of rights. But some people from the other parts capitalize on is known as the this because when democracy come in naturally, they are expecting that they should have a kind of better life, better job opportunities. Equal and they are expecting to have a kind of egalitarian society which they have been craving for. But surprisingly, when democracy come from nineteen ninety nine, the level of poverty increased, level of employment increased. So also the opportunities that they have been craving for with the issues of democracy seems to be a distant objective one. Definitely this was sought to kind of to have a kind of idea that an ideal Islamic state should be a true one that respects the rights of everybody there within the polity. So they started a kind of military Islamic militancy or Islamic militancy in order to cap out the whole northern part of Nigeria and brand it into a kind of Islamic state, meaning a bureaucratic state. So normally Nigeria as a military religious state will number normally resist such attempts. So there was a kind of feud between the government and those that are craving to have a kind of justice and employment so as to better their lives. So in the process, in the process, there was a kind of civil disobedience on the part of those that are agitating to create an ideal and egalitarian society which the government do not support in that way. Definitely it ensured and it is to entangle into a kind of into a kind of mishandling by the government to the extent that some of these agitators were attacked by government agencies and there were massive killings. So as there is also people capitalize on that and they govern nice for support in order to fight the government. So the fight continues. So the fight continues. This fight efforts made in order to restore normalcy. It's not only the fight between the Islamic militants and those that that are there were affected. But also the it has taken a kind of international dimension because it has because the strategic location of northeastern part of Nigeria lies within three countries. Republic of Cameroon, Republic of Chad and the Nigeria Republic. So definitely other insurgents and other hungry, other less than mercenaries from other countries. They also took to that part of Nigeria in order to help the Islamic militants to cap out an area, to cap out an area so that it will become an Islamic state. Definitely there was an attempt to create another country. But so this Islamic militancy also extend. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Please wind up your presentation.
Okay, it was concluded that this this militancy and insecurity within the northern eastern part of Nigeria, the government has responded positively with a kind of creating multinational joint task forces and soliciting for support especially from international organizations. So also training and retraining of personnel in order to tackle this coach because it has stabilized more than more than thirty three million people all inclusive and it has claimed over one hundred and thirty thousand lives. Couple with the displacement of about two million people that were displaced from home. First is spell poverty and uncertainty in the lives of the people that are living within the northeastern part of Nigeria. Although there were efforts in order to address the issue by empowerment through the northeast development cooperation in order to help settle and empower so as to ensure peace of the people that are living within the northeastern part of Nigeria. I believe that is okay for me.
Thank you. Thank you, Suliman Basir from Nigeria. And your presentation is really insightful on the security concerns you are facing in the north Nigeria specifically and how the government is responding and we are really grateful to you for having this wonderful presentation.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Next in line, we have Dr. Vikas Singh. Do we have Dr. Vikas with us?
Hmm, Dr. Shu, maybe Dr. Vikas may be joining later. Please, Ken.
Okay, we are calling upon the next presenter, Dr. Gigi Paul. Do we have Dr. Gigi?
Yes, sir. We have.
Dr. Gigi Paul. His assistant professor, Ma Dianosus, college Kerala, is going to present this paper. Fox sponsored militancy destroying the beauty of Kashmir.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for your kind and kind and love because you provide a wonderful opportunity to provide to present a paper titled How Pakistan's Fox sponsored militancy destroying the unity and integrity of nation. I think it is a confused paper and also so much.
I think you joined with two two machines. So that we going, we can't hear you properly.
Hello.
Just sign out from one, any machine like laptop or mobile, just sign out from one so that we can hear you properly, otherwise it is very annoying. Sign out from one so that there is no problem of echo. Yeah, I think now it's okay. Please continue.
It's okay now.
Yes, yes.
Okay. I'm repeating, thank you for your wonderful opportunity for presenting a paper titled Pakistan sponsored militancy, how they destroying the head of our nation, it is called the Kashmir. I think everybody knows Kashmir is the head of our nation. But nineteen forty seven, October twenty four to October twenty eight, as per the history of India, it says that Kashmir is not a part of India or part of Pakistan. It is independent nation. Again, November second, our first prime minister, Mr. Pandit Jwan Nehru's message aid through all the radio, he said, he said that Indian government is ready to conduct plebiscite. These are the words created so much of confusion and contradiction in the history of Kashmir. Later, Pakistan sent their Wasiri people, tribal people to Srinagar to grab or capture or to implement independent nation inside the Kashmir. But unfortunately, central government, the involvement of our army destroyed all the invasion implemented by Pakistan government and we defeated. But unfortunately, we lost more than twenty seven thousand square kilometers, it is known as park occupied Kashmir. Nineteen, I am skipping so many things because of the scarcity of time. Nineteen eighty, it is a it is a most dangerous period in Kashmir, in Kashmir history. Because first time in the history, Kashmiri militants, they tried to fight against our democracy and also they tried to destroy the unity and integrity of nation with the help of Pakistan. Most of the training camps conducted by Pakistan inside the Pakistan and also territories of park occupied Kashmir. The the second scenario, they trained local militants and also they provide so much of financial help to the local Kashmiri militants, militants groups. And they tried to, they tried to implement so many methods, how to destroy, how to defeat the unity and integrity of nation and also how to defeat our army. They started to training, but unfortunately, this thing also, this thing also we defeated. But last year, the nineteen eighty, last month, last month, December, they conducted a massive operation against a chief minister, Parikat Abdullah. They attacked his own boy. They lost more than seven innocent people. We met, I met J K L chairman, Yasin Malik, twice because of my path of PhD. I said, I asked Yasin Malik, you are living in India, but you are always talking about Pakistan. Why it's happening? He said, your first prime minister promised plebiscite. Why your government is not interested to conduct plebiscite? I said, plebiscite is not possible because we already introduced our democracy system in all the part of India. We have no interest to conduct plebiscite. So you forget about the plebiscite. But how we can create peace in this valley? He said, we are also looking for peace, but the problem, the problem is you must keep your promise. I said, it is not possible because Yasin Malik is such a former chairman of J K L. He is getting so many funds from Pakistan. As per the secret agencies report, it says that he is receiving so many funds from Pakistan and the park occupied Kashmir. But this type of dual faces regarding the political parties inside the Kashmir Valley, not all, some are. They are their their presence creating unstabilizing unstabilities in the Kashmir Valley. Again, how Pakistan trying to destroying the peace and calmness inside the Kashmir Valley? They are spending lots of money. They are spending lots of money. Sorry, sorry.
Please try to conclude in the one minute, next one minute.
Oh, yes. Anyway, I think everybody knows I'm not satisfied, sir, because it is a long history. So within one minute, I cannot conclude, but I I am obeying your order. I think everybody knows this is the happening. Pakistan is only one nation always destroying, always creating problem with our nation. But unfortunately, as per the latest surveys reveal that in the midst of pain and sorrow, more than sixty percent of people, Kashmiri people, they want to leave India. Very little, they want to join with Pakistan. Very few, they want to join with us or the Kashmiri. Because most of the Kashmiris present scenario, they knows that Pakistan is not a stable country. Even park occupied Kashmir, if you go park occupied Kashmir, it is the slavery system is also continuing. So Indian, India is the best suitable place for Kashmiris. In my studies also, more than sixty five percent, they are obeying, loving Kashmir, obeying and loving India. But I hope in future, in future, today, tomorrow, forever, Kashmiris will continue with India because it is a head of our nation. If head of it lost, what is the use of other parts? That is why Pakistan trying to send their people, army people, their spy people to grab this Kashmir. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you so much, Gigi Paul, Dr. Gigi Paul from the Kerala and your insights on the Fox sponsored, especially on the militancy and how they are creating the Kashmir. It was really wonderful to listen to you and I'm really sorry to give you so much small time because since your topic is very vast and we will be definitely reading your paper. And thank you so much for this wonderful presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. Next in line, we have Dr. Reena Nan. Do we have Reena Nan?
No, sir. Reena ma'am is not here. Actually, the next four candidates are not here, so we can start with Piyanka Singh.
Okay, special request has been made by Subarna Hatachari.
Am I audible, sir? Am I audible?
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, sir, can I go next?
Yes, yes, you are next. He is going to present a paper on human security in foreign policy, the Indian perspective. She is an assistant professor at MIT University College of Bengal. Please, Subarnaji, go ahead.
A very good morning to all. As you heard, my topic is human security and Indian foreign policy, the Indian perspective. So I start with my presentation. The end of Cold War in nineteen eighty nine has changed the notion of security in the history of international politics. Traditional military ways of making and sustaining peace and managing conflicts were greatly changed to non-traditional security measures associated with various diplomatic channels post-Soviet Union. Okay, okay. Do I need to start the video?
Yes, please, because this is for YouTube also now, that's why.
Okay, ma'am. Okay, ma'am. I'm trying to start it since the network issue is there.
We can see you. Now you can continue your presentation.
Okay, ma'am. So post-Soviet Union, the direction of the Indian foreign policy has also taken an obvious shift. Around the same time, due to the mounting economic burden, India has also introduced economic liberalization policy in early nineteen nineties to its union budget. Now, prior to the creation of the United Nation, the dominant concept of security that was centered on the state and the principle of state sovereignty. the dominant concept of security that was centered on the state and the principle of state sovereignty now security centered on territorial integrity political stability military and defense arrangements uh and financial activities that changed during this point of time now subsequent to Millennium Summit held in September two thousand two and at the initiative of Japan the UN Commission on Human Security CHS has created uh that has been created co-chaired by Sadako Ogata former UN High Commissioner of for the refugees and Dr Amr Tiasin Nobel Prize laureate in two thousand three the CHS published its report on human security known as human security now here they described it in following manner human security means protecting the vital core of all human lives in ways that enhance human freedoms and human fulfillment human security means protecting people from critical and severe threats and situation it means using processes that build on people's strength and aspiration it means creating political social environmental economic military and cultural systems that together give people the building blocks of survival livelihood and dignity human security also adds on an important dimension of development thinking as well now the mention of human security in United Nations Development Programme UNDP a human development report in nineteen ninety four brought on brought one new dimension to the concept of non-traditional security looking at this definition of the human security by UNDP that is one can relate it to the very basis of India's relation with the world since its independence be it the punch in or declared policy of no first strike of nuclear weapons in this article I am also going to try to find out how the essence of human security remained at its core with the changing dynamics of Indian foreign policy in recent years focusing on South Asian region a few more things in human security that is the that has the has always guided the Indian foreign policy it's it's been long India follows the ideals of leave and let leave and contributed to several peacekeeping operations to maintain peace and rule of law uh in twentieth century it revolves around issues such as poverty uh under development inequalities environmental degradation climate change pandemics illegal immigration people smuggling drug trafficking terrorism etc while in this
sorry to interrupt you please try to conclude in the next one minute thank you
yes 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 okay sir so uh India's participation in the initial even United Nations peacekeeping operations that resulted in a growing pool of Indian military officers uh seconded to the UN whose professionalism and experiences have contributed to UN peacekeeping doctrine now India's participation in the initial peacekeeping operations resulted in a uh resulted in success and contributed hugely massively to the world and to restore peace and human security the UN peacekeeping across the world work to ensure political transition to peace uh here we can mention one at least as such peacekeeping like UNPROFOR in the former Yugoslavia whose first force commander was India's Lieutenant General Satish Nambya now the challenges faced by India's troops uh there are certain challenges which which are regular just like terrorist activities or or what we experienced in two thousand fourteen they abducted some of our soldiers in in this in this situation the Indian troops and forces they have to go through new measures to ensure security and peace in a proper manner so in this paper I shall try to point out Indian initiatives to restore human security in neighboring states as well as in other parts of the world thank you so much thank you I conclude here thank you so much
Professor Binay you are muted please unmute yourself
thank you thank you Shubhji thank you Subarna Bhatta Char from MIT University West Bengal your topic was really insightful where you wonderfully correlated started from the Cold War and and then ended with the
I think there is some issue with the Subhanallah and on this behalf I thank you Subhanallah Bhatta Char thank you so much for your wonderful presentation on the beautiful topic next in line we have Dr Pika Singh he is assistant professor department of political science mother university going to present her paper on terrorism as a threat to human security Gandhian perspective
namaste ma'am please allow me to share my screen
yes ma'am I'm allowing you thank you
is it visible
yes yes ma'am
namaste I am Dr Piyanka Singh I am an assistant professor in the department of political science at Mother University the title of my presentation is terrorism as a threat to human security of Gandhian perspective in last two days lots of discussion has already been done on the topic human security so I am directly continuing with the Gandhian perspective of human security however Mahatma Gandhi never used the term human security but Gandhian concept of non-violence contained the whole idea of human security which adduced by UNDP's Human Development Report of nineteen ninety four for Gandhi a non-violent society is committed to serve there the growth and upliftment of all its surgeons thus we find that in terms of its referent and values human security bears a striking resemblance to the Gandhian notion of non-violence Gandhi's expression decayed ago on eleven September nineteen thirty Gandhi wrote about fearlessness in young India as freedom from all external fear fear of disease bodily injury or death or dispossession or losing one's dearest and dearest of losing reputation or giving offense resonated with the notion of freedom from fear when Gandhi said I want freedom for the full expression of my personality he was talking about freedom from want hence the ideological and philosophical roots of the concept of human security this has been propounded by UNDP's Human Development Report is inherent in the thought of Mahatma Gandhi Gandhi was echoing the similar sentiments of human security when he visualized a peaceful non-exploitative social system terrorism and violence there is a dialectic relationship between human security and terrorism terrorism is considered as a non-traditional threat to human security in post-Cold War era terrorism include both the direct and indirect form of violence Gandhi envisioned a holistic vision of peace and non-violence that rejected violence in its entirety however terrorism does not have a unified common definition but often indiscriminate violence considered as the most distinctive characteristics of terrorism but this is not truly true terrorists does not use violence violently blindly rather they use violence very logically Gandhi took a very comprehensive view on violence and expanded its scope to include oppressive structure which erode and damage human dignity and prevent human being from achieving their full full potential Gandhi called poverty the worst form of violence he include untouchability racialism criminalism gender based discrimination exploitation alienation marginalization deprivation and misery as act of violence against humanity when we are talking about discussing about violence we cannot skip the renowned name Galtan Galtan tripartite model of violence Galtan his type Galtan's typology of violence is based on Gandhian understanding of violence which is the very vast in nature as mentioned above Galtan's conceptualization of violence is the main determinants of human insecurity and the main cause of avoidable civilian death around the world we can see in the picture there are three uh dimension of violence according to Galtan direct violence structural violence cultural violence cultural violence is the most important type of violence which is root cause of all types of violence is legitimizes direct and structural violence now coming on the main uh poppy main point of my presentation combating terrorism and maximizing human security a Gandhian perspective terrorism cannot be controlled by the idea of military campaign like war on terror overseas contingency operation and other violent activities because these type of activities resulted in the death and displacement of million of innocent people in concerned countries according to a study and conducted by Western Institute of International Public Affairs the seven post nine eleven wars participated in by the United Nations in its war against terror war have caused the displacement of thirty eight million people in Afghanistan Pakistan Iraq Libya Syria Yemen Somalia and Philippines Gandhi predetermined the looming terrorist threat very early he never supported the use of violence for combating conflict or terrorism even during Indian freedom movement because when we try to combat violence with violence actually we only add violence to violence and it is resulted in the cycle of endless destruction non-violence bring out the good in people violence is just the opposite this is why in today's world there is more hate discrimination suppression and all forms of in humanity because we want our opponent to cover with fear one of the great methods of Gandhi is that you cannot defeat nastiness including violent nastiness unless you yourself shun similar nastiness altogether this has much immediate relevance today in the matter of terrorist activities now last conclusion point the concept of human security belongs to happiness freedom development safety and security of human being on the other hand terrorism is the most tremendous threat for the existence of human being the renowned scholars related to the field of peace studies and other field like Ernest Jorgelton Jinshar Mark and Jigansheimer Amartisain Dhikuparik except etc accepted unanimously the relevance and necessity of Gandhian perspective of to resolve the problem of violence and terrorism which are more or less the result of governments discriminatory rules or policies and also the unjust social and economic structure of a country or world system thus we can conclude that both the holistic concept of human security and ideas strategies and techniques to combat terrorism are inherent in the Gandhian philosophy of non-violence thank you thank you very much for listening I have made my presentation as brief as possible
thank you so much for Dr Pika for the wonderful insight on the topic there's tourism as a threat to human security there you have discussed various concepts of violence and discuss Galtan trying the model of violence and how more in terrorism and how we can maximize in human security thank you so much for the presentation next in line we have Mr Baruna Marghera who is assistant professor college of University Bhirampur Odisha do we have is going
am I audible
yes yes you are audible and is going to present his paper on human security and the contribution of Indian space program
thank you sir thank you for giving me this opportunity uh good afternoon to all the dignitaries present on this platform and the title of my paper is human security and contributions of Indian space program human security is a powerful notion that seeks to redefine and widen the meaning of security security has always meant defending state sovereignty and territorial integrity against foreign armed invasion during the Cold War this was the essence of the notion of national security which dominated security analysis and policymaking domains the academic literature on security began to think of security in a broader term in the nineteen seventies and eighties by emphasizing on the individual as the main reference object of security the concept of human security contradicts the state-centric notion of security human security refers to the safety of the individual rather than that of the states or the governments the idea of human security has been highlighted by the developments like human development reports of United Nations and the doctrine of human rights uh the concept of human security can be traced back to the United Nations Development Programs publications of the human development report in the year nineteen ninety four it had seven dimensions like economic security food security health security environmental security personal security community security and the last political security unlike the past where the political scientist played a key role in the uh defining the first security parameters in the context of human security and development economist like Mehu Bulhok Amartisain played a key role in defining the idea of human security when we talk about human security uh the idea of freedom from fear and the freedom from wants comes to our mind human security we can say that stands for the development and the defense of the individuals and when we talk about development and the defense of the individuals the relevance of the space program is a worthy example in this regard space program being pursued by India is no exception to this trend right from its inception space program of India has been operating as an instrument of smart power capable of solving the development and the defense needs of India India's space program has been contributing immensely to the strengthening of human security in India on this pretext it is important to highlight the smart power capability of a space program of India India's status has been shifted from a post-colonial state uh to a rising global power and this transition has not happened in a matter of few days but it is it 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 has been the result of India's perseverance over the last seven decades uh when we talk about the smart power of India's space program it is better to highlight some soft power dimensions of India's space program and some hard power dimensions of India's space program when we talk about soft power dimensions of Indian space program areas like climate change implementations of sustainable development goals drought control resource management crop planning metrology urban planning weather forecasting etc are the areas where the Indian space program have been playing a leading role and these are the areas we can say the direct projections of soft power dimensions of India's space program it has been serving these areas these challenges from its inception India is a leader in the third world and the third world countries are described as technological have-nots in international politics so by providing such a space-based services to the third world countries India's foreign policy can have a win-win situation in the international relations the launch of the South Asia satellite in the year two thousand seventeen and the launch of uh IRNS is Indian Regional Navigation Satellite System are the best examples of India's space programs soft power projections similarly when we talk about hard power dimensions of Indian space program India's space program is capable to enhance India's capacity in the intelligence collection in the monitoring of arms control agreements and in the development of various missile systems like anti-satellite missile systems uh all of you must know that on March twenty seven two thousand nineteen India successfully tested its fast anti-satellite missile known as missile Nissan Sakti by testing this anti-satellite missile weapon India had become the fourth member of an exclusive group of countries including United States Russia and China uh so I mean to say that India's So I mean to say that India's space program is capable to provide soft power as well as hard power to further the national interest of India. In the conclusion, I can say that the concept of human security has given a new dimension to the idea of security that was traditionally dominated by the state-centric approach. The notion of freedom from fear and the freedom from want has been able to give a holistic meaning to the idea of human security. India's space program is a perfect instrument for ensuring as well as for enhancing human security in India. Development and defense continue as the two important pillars of this program of India. According to two thousand twenty Human Development Report, India has been placed at one thirty-one rank out of the one eighty-nine countries. It means a lot has to be done in the area of education, health and economy to improve India's performance in the Human Development Index. And in the areas of education
Please try to conclude in the next one minute. Thank you.
Okay, sir. Okay, sir. And in the areas of education, health and economy, this program can play a constructive role for the betterment of people of India. India's space program is a tool of smart power and its potentialities must be harnessed systematically to realize the smart power component of space program of India. With this, I conclude, sir. Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you, Gurum Kumar Behra from the Union.
Thank you so much, Varun Kumar Behra, for the particular presentation. As you discussed the comprehensive security dimensions, where you discussed economic, political, security and etc. And you also discussed how our space program, especially the issue contributed in different, you discussed different launches and how the human lives are sophisticated due to those winters and we are enjoying such facilities. Thank you so much for the presentation. Next in line, we have Surya Kampekar. He is an assistant professor and Mark, as any assist college. He is going to present his paper on normalization of terrorism and state-level sabotage of human security and analysis on Taliban and Afghanistan. You are not audible, directly unmute yourself. Surya, you are not audible, please unmute yourself first.
Doctor, is it possible, please switch to the next participant so that they may join later on.
This Surya, I pray you can connect with Surya Kampekar and can we remember to one minute.
Yes, sir. Sorry, I didn't heard properly. What's the name?
Surya Kampekar, he is online and this video is going to transpass.
Ma'am, please allow to unmute them.
Okay. Am I audible? Yeah.
Sorry.
It's alright. Ma'am, can I share my screen?
Yes, yes, sir. Now I made you Google so you can share your screen. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope my screen is visible to you guys. Is my screen visible, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, today I'll be presenting my paper titled Normalization of Terrorism and State-Level Sabotage of Human Security Analysis on Taliban and Afghanistan. Let me introduce myself. My name is Surya Kampekar. I'm Assistant Professor on Contract on Afghanistan's College, Pardanwali in Kerala. And I'll be digging into my paper. At first, we have to look on what is happening in Afghanistan, especially the political situation in Afghanistan. Which was happening, which is happening, what is happening shortly after the US control, it's been over a few months. And soon after the US control, the con security forces faced a terrible defeat from Taliban and its capital, the whole country went under the control of Taliban, which is, which was considered as a terrorist organization. Till few months back, now it is kind of the recognized regime that is governing the state of Afghanistan. And I'll be looking onto the wide-scale human rights violations that are happening under the Taliban regime, which was happening before, before America's war on terror. And what is, and what have resumed shortly after, since few months. And I will, I'll be looking onto the human rights violations before or just before what was happening, what are the main human rights violations that were happening during the, just before the fall of Kabul. And I'll be telling on, I'll be looking onto the recruitment of children as fighters and soldiers by both by Taliban as by and by Afghanistan, special Afghan fighting forces during that time, point of time. And after the US Taliban agreement, there were serious violations or a serious, serious grants that have been given to the human rights violators, especially the impunity of the past human rights violations that have done by Taliban and its associated warlords. And the foremost, foremost, terrorist networks, just like the Hakani's, just like the Hakani's of the Afghanistan are now being legitimized as part of the legitimized government of the Taliban. And now, what happens after, since the fall of Kabul? Now, wide-scale executions and beatings are happening all over, all over Afghanistan for simple matters of violence. And the clamour of media and radio stations over the issues that are in conflict with the ideology of Taliban. And door-to-door searches and targeted killings and looting of the capital and attacks on schools and hospitals and thousands of homes, which is a grievous matter when it comes to comes to the matters concerning human rights. And the continuum of other pre-poll violations are also a severe matter that is concerning the human rights. When we discuss about human rights violations that are happening inside Afghanistan under the Taliban regime, the human rights violations against women is of very, it's of very importance. Installing fear among women and girls by searching for highly-profile women. These people were the icons of progress and icons of civilizational, civilization progress and and the efforts made by the West for the past two decades. And denial of freedom of movement outside their homes without accompanying another man or a, or a knot written by the, what, by the male, male, male counterpart, by their male counterparts of their family. And imposition of compulsory trust codes, especially including the veil as well as the, the burka and niqab. And severe curtailing on the access of employment and education, especially women, most of the women are not allowed to go to to get education and restriction on, on the right to peacefulness and place. And more of us, but some, Taliban is willing to make some negotiations only if they rest, if they declare the support of Taliban. And abusive and violent attacks on women who are organizing against this kind of regulations that are being instilled by Taliban is of a frequent matter nowadays. And the violence conducted by local warlords in contrast to the minimal assurances on human rights that were made by Taliban, dog does is a very, very serious issue. Because Taliban is not a single entity, but a culmination of different warlords and other groups cooperating for a common cause maybe previously. Now they have started some sort of skirmishes in between because of their conflicting mutual interests. And moving on to the concept of disdain, state-level sabotage of human rights. We can see a pattern shift in the perception of terrorist organizations and human rights violations. You can see US and other countries best have accepted the fate of Afghanistan and how they are treating the former terrorist organizations, especially the Hakani's, the Pakistan-based Hakani network that have been that were responsible for what, what was happening in Pakistani border of Afghanistan. And the political and military council have started providing impunity of human rights violations for war crimes. And now, what they have done in the last few, two decades, what the West was calling for accountability from Taliban regime and or they were under, what they have been, what they have been given impunity of what they were accused of for the past two decades. And decimation of moral values and basic human right protection that have been building in Afghanistan for the past two days. Whatever the West have built over, built in Afghanistan, all the progress that have, that have made by very coolian efforts that have been done in Afghanistan have not been decimated over the matter of political control and military power. And the state-sponsored persecution of personalities.
I would agree.
The state-sponsored persecution of personalities who were championing the human rights efforts in the pre-fall era and who were the icons of progress and, and other, other human rights programs are now being prosecuted. And now I'm concluding my paper, thank you.
Thank you, Surya, for your wonderful presentation on the, the analysis of the Taliban and your Afghanistan and how the terrorism and the human security is ongoing. And it was really wonderful to listen to you and we will be, sorry to have, give you some short passage of time due to the short process. Thank you so much.
Next in line, next in line, we have Maninder Kaur. She is Assistant Professor, Frigga, the Rupa Paljus Landra Hali. She is going to present her paper on cryptocurrency and security issues. It's the rising walk of cryptocurrency and opportunity of lawbreakers. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you show slides?
Yes, you can.
Is this visible to everyone? Okay, am I audible?
Yes, yes, you are audible.
Okay, fine. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Maninder Kaur. I'm working as an assistant professor in CGC Landra. And the topic of my presentation is the cryptocurrency and the securities. Issue is the rising walk of cryptocurrency and opportunity for lawbreakers. So this is the title of my presentation. So we know that cryptocurrencies are very prevalent these days and with the globalization, with the globalization, the development of the technology, these are the things which we can consider and due to these things and due to these things, the cryptocurrency is gaining an edge over other currencies, over other traditional currencies basically. And the cryptocurrency is basically a barter system, digital barter and destructive technology that is peer-to-peer network encrypted. Peer-to-peer network encrypted means we can, means we, anyone can share or you can share the digital currency like cryptocurrency within individuals without the involvement of any third party. So this is a peer-to-peer network we are using actually in the cryptocurrency. And the most popular and the world's first cryptocurrency is the Bitcoin. And Bitcoin has gained much attention for the last several years. And the cryptocurrency is anticipated as a future currency that might replace the current traditional currency worldwide. It is given by the Fozzy and twenty twenty and cryptocurrency is based on the blockchain technology, which is very latest and it was originated in two thousand eighteen, sorry, eight by an anonymous person and group of people known as Satoshi Nakamoto. In addition to Bitcoin, there is an abundance of cryptocurrency emerging and available on the market and like we have Ethereum, Ripple, Tether, Litcoins, which are available in the market and all these cryptocurrencies together are known as L coins. So the cryptocurrency demand, demanding for criminals. Why it is demanding for criminals? Because of its anonymity, the confidentiality of the use. These are the reasons criminals prefer to use the cryptocurrency. So we can say, and basically because it is de-materialized, decentralized basically. Decentralized means it is not under the control of any higher authority or any government. So it is preferred by the criminals, fraudsters and scammers to perform the illegal activities. And basically they use these for the drug trafficking, child trafficking, human trafficking, cyber crimes, exploitation, child exploitation, terror finding, money laundering and so on. And these are the illegal activities which are being performed by the criminals and the cryptocurrencies are basically used by criminals. So users, frauders and scammers can use cryptocurrency and exchange value digitally without any third-party intervention or without the oversight of the third party. Because the government, because in many countries cryptocurrency is not illegal tender and even it is a question that it is legal or illegal and people are confused about this question. They are not sure about the legality of the cryptocurrencies. Like we can take the example of the China, it is totally banned in China. In many more other countries, those are supporting this cryptocurrency. Okay, it is believed by Kethni two thousand seventeen that the criminals prefer to use cryptocurrency for the drug trafficking and money laundering. And the many countries like China, Algeria, Bangladesh, Egypt, Nepal, Morocco, Qatar, Iran, these have totally banned the cryptocurrency. And because of the anonymity of the person who involved in trading the cryptocurrency and according to
Please try to wind up in the next one minute. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Maninder, please conclude your paper.
Have you concluded your paper? Maninder, I'm audible? No.
Yes, sir.
Have you concluded your paper?
Should I go ahead or exit?
Yes, please try to conclude in the one minute, next one minute.
Okay, should I speak?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, okay. Fine. Let me share my slides. Okay, I think.
Maninder, you are suggested to conclude your topic. What are your findings? What are your observations? Please tell us.
Okay, okay, fine, sir. Fine. Give me two minutes. Is it visible? I think slides are not visible, sir. I'm not able to show the slides again.
No issues, just conclude, just conclude.
Just I want to show that there are many countries who have banned cryptocurrencies. And basically, I wanted to show the data of which countries are basically involved. And basically I wanted to show the data of which countries are basically involved like Syria, France. These are the UK and these are the countries who are in the network. Actually, I want to show you the. To the help of the P P D's, these are involved in illegal activities. And basically, the conclusion is that the scams and the ransoms. These are the illicit activities which obtained the maximum use of cryptocurrencies. In aggregate from the two thousand seventeen to twenty twenty. So just because of the anonymity, decentralization and we can say the confidentiality of the cryptocurrency. People prefer to use cryptocurrencies and individuals especially prefer to use cryptocurrency for the illegal activities. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Maninder, for your wonderful presentation on the cryptocurrency and the security issues related to the present scenario. And we are really sorry for your not giving the appropriate time for presenting your.
No issue.
And thank you so much for your presentation.
Welcome, sir, welcome.
Next in line, do we have Ravinda Singh here? We have Dr. Shaling Verma. He is assistant professor and Dr. Ramanu Maloyavat University, Uttar Pradesh. Is going to present his paper on border studies of human security perspective of Indo-Nepal borderlands. Doctor Shaling, please go ahead. This Rita, please, do not need to, please unmute him.
Okay, thank you. Hello, am I audible to you?
Yes, yes, you are audible. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Hello, everyone, and my respected chair. Today I am going to present my research paper on the topic of. The border studies as a human security perspective of Indo-Nepal borderlands. First of all, I want to analyze or introduce you about the this new stream about the border and borderland studies. So in continuation, I want to tell that the nation states in its own nature. Today is the nature of nation states today is authoritarian and. These states are heavily contested in borderland spaces on the issues of nationality, nationalism. Or securitization, arms heavy, arms amulation. So the citizen and the state structure is already in so much has so much complexities in it. So the therefore the post-globalized in the post-globalized world. In the post-globalized world, borders redefined as the national interests, the relationship with neighbors and. There is so many questions about mobility, mobilities and security in that region. In this context, my this particular study highlights some of these processes and interactions of taking place. At the periphery of the concerned state. In my study, I have taken the case study of India Nepal border. To the most existing states are not a nation states in a few sense that. Ethnoset, ethno-national groups coincide inside and outside the tranquility with its friction. However, the larger part of the current South Asian political borders was initially made on the character of European nation states. A portion of these inherently different groups might be clashing voluntarily for sovereignty or their state autonomy. In a sense that borders are the unpredictable alienation. They are political boundaries characterized as multi-layered and interdisciplinary foundations. Thus, separation of land is so much authoritative in nature. And these, these are the confirmed contracts, contrast and unorganized units. That have been placed together by categorizing or grouping or imparting or controlling the geopolitical, socio-cultural. References producing the power relationship. So the idea of borderland or border zones is not monitored by arms and military police power. But a support system of the whole zone and eco-eco-ecocentric approach. So the occupation of territory is fundamental to state sovereignty and nationality. But exclusive command over the territory also implies the unwillingness to share it with the others. The state creates its markers within. Within which it's self disintegration from the alien perspective. Patterns of this borderland divided into two major categories. First one is national borderland which is based on the emotion of alienation. And second one is the transnational borderland which is the emotion of which has the emotion of coexistence. So this second transnational border is the main characteristic of this India Nepal open borderland. At certain historical junctures, these markers are called frontiers, bond or boundaries or borders. As it has categorized by Savadar Sar. This my study finds its shape in totality by combining all elements and identified as the. On the on the model of borderland milieu which was originally the idea and theory of Martinez. He has he has developed it in nineteen ninety four. So in the borderland with you, he has categorized five basic characteristics. First one is transnationalism, second one is ethnic conflict, third one is international conflict. Fourth is the emotion of otherness and fifth is the separated, separate, separateness. So these five major characteristics I have used as a parameter to to locate or to point out the basic. Cultural and political atmosphere of this this borderland area. The location of borderland is at the edges of this nation states. So this study illustrates it by the by two features only. First one is the topographic diversity, the Himalayan, the context of Himalayan and geopolitical aspect of it. And the second one is the arbitrariness by which the European colonial powers in Indian case. It is the British power has delineated the South Asian geographical boundaries as a colonial borders. And executed the notion of the territorial state.
Doctor Shaling, please conclude your paper.
In the conclusion, I have. In the conclusion, I have introduced the. Findings as this study aims to deconstruct and analyze the idea of border and borderlands. Unlike the developed world, the post-colonial countries in Indian context kept their borders partially open or better say almost closed. Economically, the protectionist policies have been adopted to secure the interest of local population and the political. Dooswazi, the the study explores borders as not just as territorial divisions. But the manifestation of borderland and traditional notion of security by state through the border guard and security measures. The study also tries to explain border identity creation in the region as borderlands divided in the same two categories. Which I have expressed earlier, that is national borderlands and transnational borderlands. The study also presents the gendered narrative of borderlands and different aspects of development in border areas. With a deeper sense of cross-border movements and similar ethnic patterns. Based on the categorization of geographical bodies, I have observed the basic characteristics of India Nepal border. As there is the lack of no representation of borderland spaces or borderland people. Second one is the absence of absolute sovereign territorial sovereignty. Because there is a sense of mutual cultural exchanges. Third one is a lack of rural infrastructural development planning. Next is the administration and management of territorial territories need to a proper modification. Next one is the lack of the basic defense pieces of equipment and poor scanning techniques used by security forces. Next one is too many vaccinated security guards are not able to ensure the securitization. Does in a in its full sense, the securitization of people. Next one is to integrate the intergovernmental communication within the forest department and local police services. Is must need amendment during my fieldwork. I have also discussed the properties of borderlands and asked respondents according to the factors of borderland milieu. That I have discussed earlier. So in a sense, I can say that the indicators of human security and inequalities previous to globalization is. As representing the issues of flood, health, food and other insecurities in this particular region. The adverse effect produced by the end of the social welfare contract between state and the society. That is sharply reduced the role of government institutions in the borderland. Thereby produced individual and group insecurities. Though international borders are just a just a symbol of hard power. That in turn disintegrate into ethno-national class and other tensions. The consequences can be seen as civil strife, state collapse or multiple sovereignies. The new hegemonic order within its structure or ideological basis primarily benefits the interest of the. Developed countries or transnational identities.
Thank you, thank you so much, Doctor Shaling.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Presentation on the border studies. Human security perspective of Indo-Nepal borderlands and the different situations. And putting forward your recommendations against those situations. Thank you so much. Next in line, we have. Chirda Rishi. He is assistant professor, Lalit Narayan, Vithilaik University.
Interest both domestic and both domestic and global. Because international finance capital also loves ethnic nationalism. So there is collusion between financial financial capital on one hand and the weak state on the other hand. Both supports uniformity and universalizing.
Doctor Chirda, please conclude.
Yes. Financial globalization advocates one size fits all kind of policy guidelines. It does not care for the intrinsic value of inherent social construction. Educational health which are defined as married goods, they are reduced to be private goods. And it gives presidents to market forces to allocate them according to the ability of pay. Thus, the financial globalization limits the role of a state from empowering to welfare. And the welfare state kills the agency being of individuals and reduces them merely the recipients of leftover benefits. Here we have seen in South Asian region that there is very much emphasis on GDP growth. Which can be seen as commodity fetishism in the marks and terminology which ignores the social relationship among the things. And and it creates a perception of relationship only in the form of production and and exchange. To conclude, we can say that the insecurity is multiplied by the collusion of state on one hand and the financial capitalism. That causes state-led anarchy in this region. The constantly poor record of South Asia on human development report depicts the notion of state in absentee. To curate the anomalies in South Asia, there is a need to start a discourse with greater affinity with socialist perspective. To reconstruct the concept and functioning of state. Thus, the countries in the region needs to treat the state as a social construct. To end up, I quote that Prabhat Patnaak, the state must be transformed as an ossified entity standing above the society into a democratic one. That starts with and progressively dissolves itself into society. This is the end of my presentation. Thank you so much for giving me a portion.
Thank you so much, Doctor Chirda, for your presentation on anarchy and human security in South Asia. Where you discussed the relationship between. And the next in line, we have. Deepanjana Alder Madhundar, he is a research scholar, Jadhavu University, West Bengal. He is going to present a paper on rethinking the war on terror and global anti-terror initiatives, revolution on human security. Yes. Miss Rita, please do not need to. Miss Rita, please do not need to.
Yes, sir.
Deepanjana Alder Madhundar, please.
Sorry, sir, she is not there.
But I can see her, her video is on.
Sir, Deepankar Day is not there. Yes, yes, Deepankar Day is there, sir, which is seventeen sixteen, sorry. Should I unmute him, sir?
Yes, ma'am, I am here, Deepankar Day.
Okay, Deepankar Day.
Shall I start, sir?
Yeah, he is a research scholar, Central Indian University. Please go ahead with your topic. Humble request to all the participants, please, your presentation up to five minutes only.
Thank you, chairpersons, co-chairpersons and organizers, giving me opportunity to present my topics. Myself, Deepankar Day, PhD, research scholar. Department of International Relations. Central Jharkhand, my topic is the human. Human trafficking and organized crime in India, study of interstate challenges in Asia. Outlet of my outlet of my papers is that. First time going to talking about the characteristic and meaning of the human trafficking and organized crime. Then constitutional provisions related to trafficking in India. And what are the factors that are affecting the women's and children's? And tackling the human trafficking by the government of India and. Last, how the Indian implement the international conventions on the trafficking and preventing measures and concluding, concluding. So first, the human trafficking is which the purposely sexual exploitation is being increasingly prevent issues around the world. Trafficking is a huge industry which has been identified as a fast yet growing criminal industry in the world. As India under the sections three hundred seventy of the Indian penal code. Trafficking of persons for the physical exploitations or any form of sexual exploitations. Slavery or practices similar to slavery, servitude and force removals of the organs is prohibited. Case covering the wide variety of the form of the modern day slavery has been established under these sections. Today, India is also facing the greatest threat from the human trafficking and associate organized crime. Eventually, the human trafficking has poses to a company. Human right violations increase the bonded labors, prostitution increases the insecurity in society and etc. In which women's and children's are affecting more in the globally and particularly India. India has maintained the this. Position in the source of the human trafficking and involving the related organized crime. In order to obtain, it would be more tremendous visible within the chances of the interstate human trafficking. Now the question is remain that how India will eliminate eliminating and combating all from human trafficking activity in every corner of society. According to the Stanford University reports, India ninety percent of human trafficking taken place in the domestic level. Whereas the government of India data shows that the two thousand sixteen total number of eight thousand one hundred thirty two. Cases were reported under the human trafficking activity across India whereas the alone West Bengal has reported three hundred three thousand five hundred seventy nine cases. In addition, government of India has been set up the three hundred thirty two anti-human trafficking units across the state for preventing and combating the human trafficking and related organized crime. Indeed, whether the government purpose to bring the radical changes in administrations mechanism to affect in the deals with such crimes. Along with the other measure to check the incidence of the human trafficking and forced labor in the country. So what are the constitutional provisions to tackle to tackles the trafficking in India, particularly the. Human beings or persons in prohibited under the constitutions of India articles. Human beings or persons in prohibited under the constitutions of India articles, article three or twenty-three on. And another another provisions is there, the. Emumeral trafficking prevention act nineteen fifty-six. The criminal law amendment nine two thousand thirteen, which has been another section three hundred seventeen of IPC. And it is substitutes of the three hundred seventeen and three hundred seventy A. Which are the provide the comprehensive measurement to counter the menace of human trafficking including the trafficking of children's or exploitations in any form of. Including the physical exploitations in form of sexual sexual exploitations, slavery, substitutes and force removal of organs. And there is also honor of the provisions that the postcode at two thousand twelve.
Deepanker, please conclude.
Yes, 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 I am going to conclude my, that is the two category for factor factoring the event trafficking particularly women's and children's under the push. Push factor, the pull factors, the push factor like poverty and natural disasters, lack of education, skill of income, opportunity for women's. Absence of awareness and pull factors as in creative employment opportunities. And easy to manipulate, better pay for the comfortable lives, demand for the young girls for the marriages. And demand for the low paid for the under way sweet shops deliveries. So, I am going to conclude my papers that some of the preventive measures taken by the governments. One of the border measuring border measuring string enforcement enforcement particularly Southeast Asia regions. Going to the Bangladesh, Myanmar and Pakistan and Bhutan. And I am going to suggest some of the points. First of all, that proper social accountability is very much needed, economic and social practices are also very much. Required for the preventing or the how to prevent the human trafficking. And the last is awareness rising very much importance, not only the constitution.
Thank you, Deepankar, for your presentation on the human trafficking and organized crime in India. And you wonderfully correlated your topic in the South Asia and next we have with us.
Next, we have Hani Raj. We have Hani Raj.
Yes, sir, I am here.
Yes, you are audible.
Am I audible, sir?
To present his paper lines in the defense sector, the dilemma of defense or development. Please go ahead. Please try to wind up or conclude your presentation in four to five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you to the chairperson for this opportunity. I am Hani Raj, PhD research scholar in the Department of Politics and International Relations. And the topic of my presentation is India's quest for selfless in the defense sector, the dilemma of defense or development. And the purpose for this to begin my presentation, I want to start with some of the facts and figures. Released by CIPRI. According to the latest data released by CIPRI, India was the third largest military spender in the world. The US accounted for thirty-nine percent of the global share spent on military expenditure, followed by China thirteen percent. India, three point seven percent. The US spent seven hundred seventy-eight billion dollar, followed by China two hundred fifty, two hundred fifty-two billion dollar. And India seventy-two point nine billion dollar. This is. Proof that how, how, how the world is moving towards this defense proliferation. On the other hand, India's military expenditure grew by two point one percent since two thousand nineteen. It amounted to two point eighty percent of the GDP, which was, it was two point five percent, two point five two percent in. In two thousand nineteen. While, while I want to, I want to make a comparison between the defense, what India is. Spending on defense and how it is fairly in in human development. India's ranking in UNDP Development Index is one thirty-one out of one eighty-nine countries, which is a slip of two places from the. This year. So, the what India is spending more money on defense. Apart from what India ranks in human development index, paints a different picture. The ever picture highlights that the military capabilities are not helping the poor for their economic and social well beings. Some experts believe that the funding wasted on militarization should be diverted towards the development. But the proponents of security are of the opinion that security is a legitimate concern. And expenditure cannot be curb making a way for the development. So, a very important question arises that can the expenditure on defense be evaluated? On with the expenditure on development. The defense and development have remained companion to each other in India's national security discourses. And are largely perceived within guns versus butter debate. The general notion is that the expenditure on defense is indispensable for maintaining. Security, peace and harmony and that for a country like India. Which faces scores of internal and external threats like cross-border terrorism and cross-border infiltrations by China. Very often, thus, so thus to maintain a secure environment, defense expenditure is necessary. India has been.
Please conclude.
Okay, so I want to say that. That most of the countries are advancing in the field of defense technologies and India should keep a pace with the same. Therefore, balanced expenditure on growth and defense will sustain India and ensure its continuous growth and advancement. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Hani Raj, for your presentation on the defense sector, basically a dilemma for and its development. So, on the board, next we have with us.
Do we have Ravi Narayek, yes?
Yes.
He is going to present.
Ravi Narayek is there.
India's quest for self-reliance of Indian police review. Miss Rita, please do not need full, please unmute him.
Yes, I unmuted him and made me co-host so that he can share his screen as well. Thank you.
Am I audible or motion?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to express heartfelt gratitude to all the organizer and all the attendee to. For this event. So basically, let me share my screen. So is the screen visible? Yeah, thank you. So my topic is India quest for self-structure of Indian police or review. So basically, in this paper, which I had already submitted, I structured this. The paper in the fourth, fifth chapter. That's the structure of police in the center, that's even the structure of police within the state. And structural and function of the police hierarchy domain within the police institution. And existence of colonial system build the date and the post-independence development within the police stack. But however, due to the lack of the time, I would like to just focus on the tier four main point. That is, the present police act is a colonial rule and have the essence and have the smell of colonialism. You know, apart from there is a high hierarchy within the police institution, which is not required in the date. And also the amendment of the police act, the act is, there is a need of amendment within the police act. And accountability like the police are accountable to the higher authority. Rather, it should, this should be accountable to the public. And lastly, I will suggest some idea. So if we talk about the police, right, so it is derived from the Greek word politia, which means citizency, estate or the administration of the government. So the police means a system of government or the power of the state and this strong police is referred to the. State to maintain security and the peace and to enforce the criminal law. Like in India, central government and its system have its own police force, which is a separate in each, each other. So basically, like if we will talk about which law govern the police. So, the police, the police act eighty-sixty-one is the main law which go on the. Police and apart from the police act eighty-sixty-one, it is also administered by the Indian penal code, code of criminal procedure and India evidence. Act two eighty-seventy-two. I like rather than just going on this, I will just focus that who do have a. Police structure that is a central have their own police system like there is a border security force, railway protection force, central reserve. This was other central industrial security force and the estate have their, every estate have their own. Like in the state, there is a director general of police, which is the head of the police force and is responsible to the estate. Ravi Narayek, please try to conclude. Sure, sure. So like sir, what main, what is the main theme of my paper is that the police act is a colonial act. It has a smell of colonialism, you know, like we have to think that the police system, which were in the Mughal. Time, it's the same structure continuing the time, it should be amended, it should be changed. Apart from that, like we can say that there is a too much hierarchy in the police institution. Like the constable, which is the lowest at the rank, ha- is doing a lot of. Main tasks, but their voice is not addressed, right? Though whenever the higher authority asks some actor, they have to do with the blind faith. They can't use their discrimination. So lower authority, lower police ranking officer should have given. Some discrimination power as they are playing main role to the. And apart from that, there's the police institution should be accountable to public as well. It seemed that they are accountable to only high of higher authorities, estate and institution, which is since that they are bureaucrat, which are under the political regime. So there should be tears. Apart from that, sir, like you can, we can say there should be. That financial aid provided to the every police station house so that they can utilize their budget. And like from the entry point also, like the entry point, it seemed that the entry of the police is like rather than brain. They categorize in the body, it should not happen like that. The intellectual should, product should be. Commented and at last I will say that every estate have authority to. Promote their own law, estate law and they have to bring revolution within the police structure. Like police structures, structure in India totally in colonial regime and there should be a more accountable to the public. So, I, the last thing is, lastly, I will conclude that there is a requirement of the amendment of the police act. And there should be place hierarchy within the police and they are accountable to the. Public rather than political force rather than the state, so only the religions and the higher officials should be also in touch with the ground. It seemed that only lower, our lower rank official are in touch with the public and at, at. At the further states, the decision of the higher authority prefer rather than the lower authority. So there should be coordination between them. So I would like to conclude this question. Thank you, Ravi Narayek, for your reviewing the self-structure of Indian police and the next we have with us.
Next in line, we have Deepanjana Halder Madhundar, he is a research scholar from Jadhavpur University, West Bengal. He is going to present a paper on rethinking the war on terror and global anti-terror initiative, revolution on human security. Deepanjana, please go ahead and let us humble request to please try to wind up your presentation within four to five minutes. Miss Rita, please do not need full, please unmute her. Miss Rita.
Please make them co-host.
Yes, may I audible, sir?
Yes, yes.
Yes, thank you.
I'm so sorry.
Yes, it's okay. So, good afternoon, everyone. I am Deepanjana Halder Majumdar, PhD research scholar of Jadhavpur University in International Relations Department, Kolkata. My presentation topic is rethinking the war on terror and global anti-terror initiatives, the evolution of human security. I will be sharing my screen with your permission.
Yes, ma'am, sure, you can show us, share your screen. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Yes. Terrorism is a way to establishing the will, authority dominance of a group or authority through intimidation. Which can be organized for religious or ideological reasons or to maintain political authority. Multifacist terrorism has crossed the national borders and entered international arena largely after the end of the Cold War. As the tide of the globalization swiped across the globe, so did the effect of terrorism on the world. Terrorism is politically motivated violence that presents an unprecedented violence in front of the government and the public. Globalization has contributed to the predominance of a market economy and an increase in technological government and communications. Although this has positive results, but there are some negative result also such as security threats of to humanity. Currently, the world faces challenges such as abandonment of norms, national identity crisis, financial instability. Unemployment and an absence of functional security, these challenges make societies are perforated environment for global terrorism. Now, I will describe some of the causes behind international terrorism that are inherently linked to human security. First, psychology, the psychological factor, several psychologists have. According to expert and, according to expert, the amount of special chemicals in the brain. Lead to emotional separation as a result of positive differences. Muslim jihadist organizations psychologically propagate to the younger generation that they are joining the jihad for the Sheikh of Allah. Thus, psychological influence terrorist groups try to include the younger generation in the group. Next, ideological factor that believing in the doctrine of Marx Lenin Mao. Many joint ideologically militant organizations, the Maoist and Noctialist group. In India, belief in establishing socialism through revolution by radically challenging. The conventional system as well as the capitalist, capitalist socioeconomic and political structure. Environmental factor and cultural, culture of violence, some psychologists believe that if the environment. In which the child grows of the politically unstable, if there is a low social mobility, poverty, illiteracy.
Please try to conclude in the one minute.
Yes. Criminal activity etcetera and an anti-institutional mentality is formed for a very beginning. Next, religious fundamentalism and colonialism, application of extreme guerrilla strategy. And availability of weapon and organized crimes of drug trafficking. And international criminal gangs and drug smugglers have a growing nexus with terrorism, drug smugglers have. Our formed networks around the world in association with our terrorist groups, the Sri Lankan Tamil Tigers, India's Naga extremists. And the Taliban militant group in Afghanistan really on drug smuggling to fund rights. There are many types of international terrorism you are watching, but the presentation time is very short. So I am not discussing this at the moment. Finally, I will conclude here without finding refills. The terrorist threats to human security would not be addressed through the tradition mechanism alone. They required a new consensus that recognized the linkage and invencies between development, human rights and national security. Through a comprehensive approach that uses a wide range of new opportunity. Overall, the purpose of this article was to examine how to warrant terror strategy could be developed. Sophisticated and effective strategic formulation must transcend the simplicity, simplistic notion. That our initial strategy will continue, but will instead predict and guide its evolution. Policemaker also need to anticipate future catastrophe in the fight against terrorism in terms of human security. And adapt our strategy appropriately when the social. Strategy appropriately when the social, political and cultural context allows. The enemy has shown remarkable ingenuity and adaptability. It remains to be seen whether we can show equal flexibility and efficiency. In judging effective multi-dimensional warfare against them. I will end here, thank you.
Uh thank you Deepan Jana for your wonderful presentation. So on the next we have with us.
Next we have Bitu Raj, do we have Bitu Raj here?
Right. Thank you sir, excellent. Sir, next two candidates are not available here, so we can, we can go with John Guide. Thank you.
Okay. We have John Guide with us, he is a research scholar and research associate, Diwala Hindu University and Center for Airpower Studies. He is going to present his paper on human security, which is a component of India's national security framework.
Hi, uh am I audible to all of you?
Yes, yes.
Okay, hi. I'll just share my screen with all of you. Just wait. Hmm, just wait, just wait. This is not the one. How do you remove this? Just wait, just wait. Can you see my screen?
Not yet.
Can you see, can you see my screen now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'll just share this with you, just 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 give me a moment, yeah. Yeah, hi, can you all see this now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just start. Thank you IAHSG for the wonderful opportunity. My name is John Thangal Sanghui Ti, I'm a recent scholar with the Diplomacy and Development Division with the School of National Studies in Geniu. I'm a recent associate with the Center for Airpower Studies and I was a former junior research consultant with the National Human Rights Commission. So today I'll be talking about human security as a crucial component of India's national security framework. What is security, right? Theory, the theory of security was, it is conditioned of being free from danger or harm. International relations theory is dominated by realist theory with balance of power and this zero sum game. Morgenthau and Hans Morgenthau and Kenneth Walls used to define about how security is mostly related to military security. The post-Cold War international politics was dominated by multiple issues to multiple channels. This was reinforced by Kehoe and I in their wonderful book, Power and Independence in nineteen seventy nine. Nowadays, according to Kehoe and I, you have global issues and challenges. Pandemics, HIV AIDS, COVID nineteen, SARS, you have unemployment, poverty, foreign exchange, crisis, economic, which are basically economic issues. Melting glaciers, loss of powder discover, forced migration, space and wildlife humans. So. With all these new threats, you have new need for new concept of security. Security international relations domain fast is fast changing and transforming with new unforeseen and unexpected events. Richard Ilman, in his wonderful article, Redefining Security in nineteen eighty three, called Non-traditional Security Threats, which is derived from non-military nature. Barry Bazzan, in his book called People, States and Fair, authored in nineteen eighty three, talked about security is all penetrative, subject to debate as the security gender is broadened at political. Economic, societal, environmental and many other factors. Security for whom?
John, please try to conclude in the next one.
Security for whom? If states are no longer the main focus of post-Cold War studies, who is it? Ken Booth, talks of security in emancipation nineteen ninety one, David Ballman, the concept of security nineteen ninety seven, talks about security for whom? Security is now for the individual, for societies. These are some of the authors who talk about human security, right? The concept of human security was developed in UNDP Human Development Report in nineteen ninety four. The human security is people-centered, it is concerned with how people live and how people beat in society. Meher Buppa Ulhux paper, New Development in Security nineteen forty talks about individuals and not states. Safety and well-being of the individual is all about human security, right? Burden Roncharan talks about how human security can be achieved, can be achieved with the promotion of human rights by ensuring development and justice. This is Burden Roncharan and his wonderful book, Human Rights and Human Security. So India's national security setup, we need to talk about individual security to form respective human rights and freedoms. This is what Burden Roncharan talks about, what if human rights are violated and ignored? Underdevelopment leads to conflict and conflict leads to further underdevelopment when resentments can transform into militancy, which further promotes more violence that transforms itself into more underdevelopment. But Janoye Dakschwaksh in two thousand and seven, these are the two authors which talk about this claim. Naxim Open by Maoist led by CPI marks the under charter margin by ninety six seven, which is basically land issue in rural level divide. The MISO insurgency from nineteen sixty six to nineteen eighty six caused by famine and struggle for right to liberty dignity, right? The denial of human rights, what's its state? The denial of human rights leads to violation of human security. And violation of human security leads to resentments and public outrage caused by protest, strikes administrations, which will get transformed into insurgency and internal destabilization. Which will be a compromise on national security. Humans, these were the two authors, under Janoye Dakschwaksh, which talk about human security. So future challenges for India's national security, economy, providing jobs, speeding and effective criminal justice system that avoids vigilante society, regulation of media, unbiased and fair to avoid common conflicts. National integration by revamping of the education system, cultures of indigenous people of northeast India need to be understood in mainland avoiding hate crimes and regional tensions. Sustainable practices by union government, revamp and reboot of the health infrastructure, solutions following NHRC guidelines. Union government spending on health infrastructure, providing jobs for youth every year by hiring on mass scale and proper investment in climate change technologies. So in order to avoid internal destabilization, we also need to look at all these factors. This is the recent burning of the train in Bihar recently when there was an issue of the RRP exam, this is about recent racial tensions. Of course upon the communities of northeast India in urban areas, this. So basically, if India has to avoid, if India has to avoid such internal destabilization from social fragments, then we need to encompass human security through human rights and human development. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your data analysis. So next we have with us, Neeraj Singh Mahan, Manhas.
Yes, sir.
Hello.
Yes.
Am I audible, sir?
Yeah, yeah. I must compliment John, John Guide for the presentation. Thank you so much for the wonderful presentation. We wanted to hear you more but due to the time limitations, you know and you can understand the assumptions. Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Hello, research scholar at Sarjhar Patel University, who is going to present his paper on India's national security policy and human security. Please libertize yourself to our up to three to four minutes only, thank you.
Thank you so much sir, am I audible, please, can you please confirm?
Yes, yes, you are audible.
Okay, okay, thank you so much. A very good afternoon to one and all, I am Neeraj Singh Manhas and. I'm going to speak on a topic, India's national security and the human security. And my previous, all the participants have already described what is human security and their pertaining issues which are relevant. Into the Indian context. So I'm going to focus on a very, another aspect of human security which we have mostly, you know, ignored in a sense of in India. So in India, we talk about national security policies, but you know, there is a, there is a very narrow concept of national security if we see. Because it only, you know, tries to protect the state, a state only. And but whereas we, when we talk about the human security, it takes up all the important issues and the important global challenging issues which are, you know. Like the global issues, pandemic issues, so many other issues which are, you know, related to human security. So as you know, because we are taking up the individual also into that. But in the national security, we are just, you know, totally focused towards the state security. So my point of view and my questions are very much simple here because as we belong to India where we have a, you know. Large number of population is there and we have a growing GDP. So in that case of scenario, the national security concepts, you know, over the ages have gone through many fundamental changes. And you know, the, but we are lacking somewhere. So that's kind of a question where I want to, you know, focus more on and I'll just briefly talk about. So my, that question is, you know, first of all, we need to, you know, club both the human security and the national security. Both together so that there is, when we talk about both the things, there should not be any kind of a difference. In, you know, talking or discussing or formulating any kind of a policy in that. So the one focus area where I think, where India need to focus on that is, which is also a part of human security, that is cybersecurity. And that's one of the very important, you know, issue because India is such a growing population and we Indians are the third largest population. Where we are using internet in the, in the world. So seeing as a country like China or Russia where, you know, the global hackers are hacking, not through, you know, they are not. Having a war in person, but they are hacking and globally, you know, they are creating that kind of atmosphere in the world, which is very much horrifying. Like in the case of, you know, Russia, Ukraine, yesterday only we have seen how much, you know, Russia is totally hacking up the Ukraine. You know, total their cyber space. So that is the, actually, you know, I think that is the need of the hour where India actually need to focus on. And you know, thinking as a human security, because both the things are interrelated and we should not ignore that kind of a part. And in the last concluding part, I would just want to focus on that, you know. That both the given India's governance, strong governance, we have a large, you know, we have the largest democracy in the world. But you know, there is a need of that comprehensive strategy where we need to focus both on the part where we need to focus on, you know. We, you know, re-change the national security policy and we need to look on both the human security and national security on a same parallel way. So that, you know, there is a lack of, there should be a development of, you know, both on human security and national security perspective. Thank you so much.
Thank you Neeraj from Gujarat and attending this session and your topic on the national security policy and human security really enlightening us. And on the next we have with us.
Next, we have some earlier speakers who were not present at that time, but now they have come and they have some limited limitations. So we are calling them. Next, we have Ravinder Singh, who was assistant professor of astrology, RMT University, Punjab. He is going to present his topic on religion and human security and understudied religion depth. Dr. Windho, please try to consider your speed of up to five minutes or four minutes, thank you. Uh Miss Rita.
Yes, sir.
Please unmute Ravinder Singh.
Sir, next is I think Suvarna.
He is our earlier speaker.
Yes, sir, and he is available there.
Please unmute Ravinder Singh.
Who might need to unmute, sir? Ravinder Singh, okay. Yes, sir.
Audible? Yes, you are audible, please do it.
Hello everyone, I will quickly skip the pleasantries and come to the main part. The topic of my discussion is religion and human security, it's a very vital issue, not explored that much. But the exploration of how religious actors affect human security is refreshing in its breadth and depth. And freedom from any narrow theoretical framework, the combination of two concepts, that is human security. And religion provides a broad analytical framework. These definitions of religion like the socially enacted desire for the ultimate, they allow space for mystery in the religion as well. For example, these are very well illustrated by the religiosity in Brazil as well as the de-institutionalization in Zimbabwe. A comparative relationship between religious and state actors contains the potential for violence as well, although this is not predetermined. The comparison of religious opposition to state oppression in Poland and Algeria stresses the fact that. Importance of the third dimension of human security, that of political subjectivity and religion is the paramount importance of the time. I will quickly come to the conclusion of my address. One question that needs answering while talking about religion and human security in India is that, what sort of country are we becoming? What happens to a country when it has been hollowed out of emptied and it has been emptied of meaning? What happens when religion, a force that binds society together, has turned into something dangerous? Some of us were worrying about this before it actually happened. There has been a revelation, the most favorite industrialist has taken the second most favorite industrialist as the richest man in India. It happened recently, right? Fifty one billion dollars were added to the overall wealth of that person in the last year. When most of India was falling into poverty and hunger and joblessness. All this was set in place after a political party came into power. Depressed the accelerator for big business way back in two thousand and nine. After the Gujarat massacre, Ratan Tata and Ambani were endorsing Narendra Modi as the future prime minister. The OX fam report says that inequality in India has become absolutely obscene. You have these people who own boats, mines and petrochemicals, the media and the internet and so on. And that kind of monopoly capital, I don't think even the capitalist countries practice. The corporate class in India underwrites the Hindu nationalism. The institutions of India were eroded by the massive influx of capital even at the time when UPA were in power. Now, you have institutions of India, I'll skip within thirty seconds. Uh now, you have these institutions of India, whether it's the press, the courts, the intelligence services, all educational institutions or even religion. They have been penetrated, overtaken and compromised by this Hindu nationalist ideology. India is moving away from being a democracy and having clearly unconstitutional laws like the abrogation of section three seventy. Or the farm laws and the citizenship amendment act laws that devastate the lives of the people and the Supreme Court is still pondering whether it's constitutional or not. The office of prime minister makes such announcements like the demonetization which devastated the country. And its economy, the announcement of the lockdown within only four hours notice, the withdrawal of the farm laws. Which was an as insulting as the promulgation of the farm laws. One political party has begun to confuse itself with the nation and with the state. If that, if that party is rich, the nation is considered rich. If you criticize that party, you criticize the nation, which is not the case. And you are termed anti-national. This is a very dangerous thing for human security. At last, I want to conclude with just one line that India is moving away from the constitutional commitment to secularism. And instead becoming a mono-religious and majoritarian country. Thank you.
Uh thank you Ravinder for giving us insights on the religion and human security and having a holistic view. So next we have with us.
Next we have Dr. Ruhvi Sambal. He is assistant professor. Miss Rita, please unmute her. Miss Rita.
Yes, sir.
Please unmute Ruhvi Sambal.
Sir, Mr. Begul, I already make him co-host. I think he is the next.
We have earlier speakers also who were not present at that time, but they have just arrived now.
Yes, sir, he is there and I make him co-host so that he can share his screen as well. I'm gonna unmute him, so I unmuted him. Thank you.
Who are you talking about?
Uh number twenty four.
Number twenty-four, uh, Suvarna.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, sir. Can you please give me permission to share my screen?
Yes, yes, please Suvarna, go ahead.
Thank you, sir.
From Mumbai University, Maharashtra, she is going to present a paper on Maoist insurgency and human security in India and Nepal.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Suvarna Bhagwad, presently a U G C N A J R F fellow at Mumbai University. I am working on my broad topic, India Nepal. At that time, I came across the issue of maoism in Nepal, which finds many similarities in nax- uh, naxalism in India. Today, I am going to present you topic on Maoist insurgency and human security in India and Nepal. Uh, basically, human security, uh, is about issues about conflict, violence and deprivation. In case of India, an external actor called Maoist has created an atmosphere for threat and violence. Uh, our former Prime Minister Manmohan Singh called Naxlate movement as the single biggest threat for internal security. Uh, it originated in nineteen sixty-seven and presently spread, spread across.
P P T, you can answer.
Of India's twenty-nine states. Uh, oh yeah, it's, it was originated in nineteen sixty-seven, uh, with the split of Communist Party of India. And near about, uh, it has near about four thousand incident took place in the country from middle of nineteen seventy-two to nineteen seventy-one. It has armed cadar called as People Liberation Guerilla Army, having the strength of near about six, uh, six thousand five hundred to nine thousand five hundred cadars in two thousand thirty and it is equipped with smart arms. A report of Asian Center for Human Rights claimed nearly two eighty-five civilians and one thirty-five security persons were killed in Maoist conflicts during two thousand six. Then, along with killings, Naxlate also targeting public properties and services like schools, hospitals and railway. They are also involved in extortion, taxes and narcotic trades. Uh, Narcotics Control Bureau in India reported that Naxlate thrive on money on to illicit cultivation. Then in two thousand seven to nine, Naxlate were active in one eighty districts covering area of ninety-two thousand square meter forming a raid corridor. And at present, this raid corridor is also linked to.
Try to conclude.
From India to, yes, yes, sir. Uh, then in problem of Maoist in Nepal, it was mainly originated, it was mainly from Communist Party of Maoist was formed in nineteen forty-nine. But People's War was initiated in nineteen ninety-six by Pushpa Kumar, the help. Then, uh, Maoist had almost displayed, uh, one lakh to one point five lakh people internet displayed. Then, how to tackle the problem of this Maoist? India, Indian government, uh, from two thousand four to two thousand fourteen has taken many measures of good governance related to providing unemployment, uh, employments, then, uh, various services like school, education, electricity. Through these services which reach to, uh, late week, ex-mit districts. Then, I have also studied some case studies of Andhra Pradesh, West Bengal, Bihar, where, uh, various strategies like winning hearts and minds. Then various combat forces like Grey Hounds were formed, uh. In case of Nepal, institutional of political party for democratic development was used and, uh, the party, uh, was ele- the Maoist party was elected in two thousand eighty as the single largest and its chairman was appointed as Prime Minister. So, I want to conclude with the, uh, you, uh, the trait of human Maoist and naxalism in, uh, Nepal and India can be deal with the two majors. First, first is of good governance, which was followed by India and, uh, latter that is Nepal followed, uh, by institutionalized Maoist career through a political party which was elected to power. Uh, thank you delegate for, uh, giving me opportunity to present my views. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Suvarna, for your detailed presentation on the insurgency, uh, related to the human security and Maoist in the India Nepal. So, next we have been joined by Dr. Rohit.
Dr. Rohit Shangal, he is Assistant Professor in Chaliga Business School of Administration, Chaliga Group of Scholars, Muhali. He is going to present a paper on social media and human security, really finding the boundaries. Ms. Srita, please unmute her. Srita, we cannot hear you.
Srita, you are mute, mute. Yes, sir, sir, next is Somya Dev Vidyanti and, uh.
Please unmute, uh, Dr. Rohit Shangal.
Yes, sir.
Please unmute, uh, Dr. Rohit Shangal.
Rohit, okay, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you.
Is my voice audible, sir? Is, is my voice audible, uh, sir? First of all, I extend my congratulations and my regards to the, uh, organizers of the conference. So skipping to the, uh, P P T, the topic for my paper presentation is social media and human security, redefining the boundaries. The boundaries of human security have been evolving, led to explore and acknowledge the new dimensions being added to it. Earlier, the term security led us to think about the border security, the defense over the borders, the wars and everything. But now the boundary, uh, the boundaries for such security have been blurred and now we have many things lined up on the aspect of security that extend to our own mobile phones, to our own laptops as well. Human security is obviously no longer just confined to the fiscal aspects of the border. The widespread adoption of social media and networking sites has raised a wide range of security and privacy concerns which affect the human security as well. Social media statistics, what makes social media so powerful? Uh, on an average, the statistic states that every minute of the day, one lakh tweets are sent. See, these many contents are shared on the Facebook, two million, uh, search queries are made on Google. This tells us how powerful social media has evolved out to be. The most, uh, India is the second country to have most of the social media users. This actually defines the criticality for social, uh, media, uh, privacy issues in India. The enormous data that is shared on these sites may include the personal details, your address, hometown, email address, every interest, activity, political view, educational view, relationship status and many more things. So actually, all of your personal life is actually no longer personal to you when you sign in on social media. So that particular thing gives rise to the various privacy issues. The, there are many types of social, uh, networking site where the first type is social network, where you build your network. Then sharing sites where you basically share the information, that may be your photos, videos or everything. And the third most, uh, the thing that is very concerning is location-based services. What is privacy? Privacy is actually, the privacy actually.
Body and the concluding part of your presentation.
So the concluding part of the research says that, uh, there have been very novel type of privacy issues over social media like revealing users' privacy online. Uh, you know, the identity theft that we have. The next type might be, uh, the privacy concerns using this sensitive information that the user has shared online. The user might not even know who all other people know what they have shared and that can be misused against them. Studies say that people have been physically attacked, they have been physically stalked, they have been attacked due to their political opinions which they have shared online. So this is another cause of concern, one of the, uh, exposure to inappropriate content. Children's are exposed to very inappropriate content that is not age appropriate for them. That might be an issue for the parents, that is a concern. They may be, uh, uh, you know, exposed to pornography, use of alcohol, uh, substance abuse and other type of things, that is actually not age appropriate. Spamming, you might be bombarded with messages of just one kind every day, hundreds of emails that you get. That is basically harassing with spamming, that again leads to le- uh, leakage of your privacy. Now, the concluding past part is that the risk that social media posed, the privacy issues that are there are very novel and they need very novel solutions as well and they are evolving every day. Every day, a new, uh, issue arises. So, there needs to be a very stringent, uh, legal frameworks since the social media is very, uh, new. We do not have very stringent laws and the other thing, other than the legal aspect is awareness. Only the person who's aware of these dangers is the one who can protect himself over this social. Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Rohit, for your detailed analysis on the social media and how the, how it related to the boundary of human security. So, since we are having a shortage of time, uh, next we have with us.
Thank you so much for the opportunity, sir.
Next we have Somya Dev Vidyanta, who is a research scholar in the Department of Political Science, Delhi University.
Am I, uh, am I audible?
Yes, yes.
Uh, so the topic of my presentation is this. Just a second. Drone warfare and human security. So, the last couple of decades have seen a massive proliferation in the use of unarmed aerial vehicles, that is UAVs, also known as drones. Predator drones carrying Helfa missiles have been used extensively in the global war on terror. More recently, drones have also been used in peer conflicts and civil wars, particularly those where proxy actors are involved. This has brought about concerns of human security, given the possibility of civilian casualties. This paper would look into this aspect and suggest framing of an international regime regulating drone usage by all parties. Now, due to time constraints, I am skipping a few slides. Human security is more adversely affected during civil wars. This is especially the case for ethnic conflicts where a group's ethnicity may make it a target in the conflict. Thus, they are a special source of concern from a human security perspective. Intervention even benevolent often worsens the situation. The introduction of drones in civil wars can also be attributed to the intervention of external powers, particularly through the use of proxies, proxies. The two powers most responsible for this are Turkey and Iran, as we will see. Apart from Azerbaijan, Turkey has also deployed its T B two drones in civil wars in Syria and Libya. The later case is more interesting because Turkish drones are operating on behalf of its proxy, the G N A. Turkish help, including the use of its T B two drones were crucial for G N A to rebel the N L A offensive in twenty nineteen twenty. While drones have been deployed against military assets, they can potentially be used in other scenarios where chances of civilian casualties are much higher. Without international protocols regulating their use, indiscriminate use of drones has the capability to cause higher civilian casualties. Iranian drone usage, Iran is a huge network of proxy actors toward the Middle East, which Iran uses to exercise influence over Middle Eastern geopolitics. Iran mainly helps its proxies with financing, technology and strategy and mostly only maintains loose control over them. There are few major differences between the way Turkey uses drone technology and how Iran uses drone technology. Firstly, Iranian drones are much less sophisticated than Turkish drones and operate more like locket ammunition. Secondly, Iran leaves the operations of the drones to the personnel of the proxies it supplies drones to. Thus, the potential liability of Iran is reduced and gives Iran plausible deniability. Lastly, most important, yeah, sure, most importantly, Iranian drones do not exclusively target military assets but civilian ones as well. This has been seen repeatedly over, uh, multiple theatres, most prominently in the context of civil war in Yemen. So, to conclude, I'd like to say that the unregulated use of armed drones in conflicts reduces human security and the only way to mitigate it, this is through an international treaty or convention. Unless there is a law to regulate drone warfare for humanitarian reasons, not much can be achieved. This result can only happen once there is pressure on states to act and to protect vulnerable people in conflict zones. Only through this would be, be making the world a safer and better place. Thank you.
Dr. Ashok.
Thank you so much, uh, yes, yes, ma'am.
Uh, you have only five minutes left.
Next we have, uh, we have, uh, Mr. Rohit. Ms. Srita, we have Mr. Rohit.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rohit.
Please make Rohit host.
Rohit. Yes, sir, we have Rohit Thakur. Yes, sir, done, thank you.
Am I audible, sir?
Yes, you are audible, but it's a humble request to you, Rohit, please, uh, summarize your paper in one to two minutes.
Uh, sure, sir, sure, sir. So, I am, uh, basically skipping the P P T, uh, slides. So, thank you, sir. Before starting the today's presentation, I would like to congratulate and thanks all the organizing members, especially the interdisciplinary institution for human security and governance, New Delhi, who provides us this opportunity to present our joint research paper in this international conference. My name is Rohit and I am a final year master student in the Department of Defense and Strategic Study, Myslopades University, Shimla. Today, I am here to present our joint research paper, written with Mr. Bineesh Patia, Ph D Research Scholar at Department of Defense and National Security Studies, Punjab University, Chaligarh. The title of our research paper is Security Dilemma in Indian Ocean Region and Its Implication for India. So, with your due permission, I would like to start our paper presentation with introductory part. Before introducing the topic, let us overview the Indian Ocean region that encompass.
Rohit, again, it's a humble request, please do not mention your introductory, uh, part in this session because we have very limited time right now. You just, you can summarize your paper in one minute or you can come over to the main body and the concluding part.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, sir. So, uh, now basically I am skipping to the main part, uh, where we will talk about the, uh, where we will talk about why there is security dilemma in the Indian Ocean region. So, over the period of time, what we have seen is that, uh, over the emergence, emergence of power struggle has given major challenge to the security of key dominant players like India in the region. Thus gives right to the security dilemma in the Indian Ocean region. Some of the key causes behind occurrence of security dilemma are that still India does not have a coherent Indo-Pacific policy, which can explicitly focus on the Indo-Pacific region. India's long maritime boundaries porous border with other regional dispute makes India more susceptible and vulnerable in the region. Further, piracy, terrorism, maritime dispute under United Nations Convention of Law of Seas, et cetera, has increases India's vulnerability in the region. So, uh, I am skipping the other parts and going to the conclusion part, that is our main, uh, finding or key avails of this research paper, that is, India needs a consolidated Indian Ocean vision through the development of common understanding and comprehensive strategy with the collaboration of every stakeholder in order to gain trust, uh, surplus and pre-eminence in the Indian Ocean region. Further, India in order to fulfill its aspiration of becoming the leader of global south, needs to take active participation in resolving the various regional dispute through diplomacy, debate, deliberation, discussion and negotiation. Therefore, paper concluded that if India wants to ensure its vision of pre-open, transparent, inclusive and peaceful Indo-Pacific region, then immediate focus must be on these extra regional powers in the Indian Ocean region. That is all from my side, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Rohit, for your wonderful presentation. Do we have Retica Burma?
Yes, sir, am I audible?
Yes, sir, yes, yes, please do it.
Yes, sir.
Please try to summarize your paper in one or two minutes.
Uh, yes, sure, sir, sure. So, my topic is impact of COVID nineteen, uh, pandemic on human security and education. So, uh, just to conclude, okay, so human security has relationship, uh, with these different aspects, I, as you are also, uh, as my screen, uh, screen is also there. So, now, educate, uh, talking about education, so these are the three aspects which are related to education. Inquisitiveness and spirit, scientific temperament and rational thinking, which makes the purpose of education fulfill. So, uh, moving on to the conclusion part, so I made a standard scale to measure the scientific temperament of the students. So, uh, the, in the analysis part, you can see there are, uh, out of three sixty-six students, uh, twenty-two percent students have basically the scientific temperament below average and only forty-four students have the scientific temperament which is very superior. So, there is a educational insecurity during COVID nineteen pandemic on these four aspects, that is, student perception on COVID nineteen as a stigma or taboo that comes in the insecurity issues and limited time and unequal access and interact, for interaction and discussion, then gender disparities and socio-economic disparities and then informal education too. So, uh, you can see the perception of students of, over the COVID, COVID nineteen, uh, as stigma or taboo that makes their, uh, uh, their society, uh, as. that makes their society as very much insecure. So informal education is one of the most important part which is the, which comes in secondary education that is in most countries which is the most rapid phase in the physical, mental and emotional growth of the students. Then unequal access to technology and educational resources. But interesting finding is that there are some students who keep on motivating themselves by using modes like online resources and then gender disparity issues for a human security perspective. It is most important to stress the direct and indirect psychological and socio-economic impacts. So COVID-19 pandemic has also widened the gender gap in education between males and females. Now coming on to the conclusion part, human security perspective is based on basic education must also deal with the coverage of education and the curriculum. The students mostly come in the age group of young adults and later adolescents and this is a time when they are going to decide their future career. And but on whole, the scientific temperament of these students are declining in that phase in which they are going to decide their future career. So thank you so much.
So next we have with us.
Do we have Nithika?
Yes, sir. No, sir, she is not there and Joy is also not there.
Joy has presented his presentation in the first.
Okay, sir.
Do we have Hasnain Mahmood?
No, sir, Hasnain is also not there.
We have Surinder Singh.
Yes, sir, Surinder Singh is there. Yes, sir.
Surinder Singh is an professor of the Roman College, Haripur, Manali.
Okay.
Yes, you are audible and please try to summarize your paper in one or two minutes because we have.
Okay, sure, sure, sure. I will summarize my paper and I will try to put the important points only. So the title of my paper is the globalization and the issue of non-traditional security, non-traditional security threats of India. Generally, we talk about the traditional threats if we related with the theoretical paradigm, which is realism. Apart from that, what type of non-traditional securities that India is facing in the present time, that becomes a very, very important question, which I feel. Especially in the domain of the climate change and energy security, agriculture and food security and the issue of health. So I have divided my paper in these broader themes like climate change and energy security, agriculture and food security and the issue of health. Because I feel both these domains are very, very important in framing the Indian foreign policy. How the India is going to take up preferences while framing the foreign policy, it becomes very, very important. How the non-traditional security threats have been tackled. Because if we see the process of the securitization, then definitely there is some sort of limitation within that process. So how we can go beyond that, the process of securitization, that becomes very, very important. So firstly, I am taking climate change and energy security and in the present time, it becomes very, very important and significant issue because you know, the India has framed its foreign policy especially from the, you know, before nineteen ninety-one and after nineteen ninety-one, there are the different types of postures which have been seen. Like you know, before nineteen ninety-one, there was some sort of defensive foreign policy which India was taking into account. But how now they, you know, the India is going to be a major power and how it is, how it is going to be a responsible power that is also becoming very, very important in this domain. How the core issue of the climate change and the energy security are going to be handled by the foreign policymakers of the India.
So surrender, please try to conclude. Please try to conclude.
Okay, okay, okay. I think in this, I might just take the central point because you know, the climate is a very, very, I think, very, very core issue for that whatever diplomatic relation we are framing with the other country. We have to keep in mind how the mass population and you know, socioeconomic regulations of India will be very, very considered within that domain of framing the foreign policy. And if we talk about like agriculture and food security especially, it also becomes like how the socioeconomic regulation, which are the voices which are coming from the blue have been considered, this was the main point here in it. And the issue of the health is also important because India is a vast country and the people have not that much accessibility to the, you know, important medicines. So for that, there should be the accessibility of the masses for the majors and you know, life-saving medicines. So this is the, you know, long division, so I will not go into that. So these are the points which I was trying to raise and the most important thing how how the responsible power India can make its foreign policy for the, for the interest of the common people that becomes very, very important and it is providing us for some sort of insight for the research even in the future. So that diplomatically it can be helpful for the India and the Indian government especially. Thank you so much.
Thank you, surrender, for your enlightenment on the globalization and the security threats. So next we have with us.
Nittika. Bhattacharya, do we have?
Who all? Yes, yes, Dr.
Dr. Sumanta, I would request you to please summarize your paper in one or two minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, really sorry that we are running out of time and it's two ten already. So thank you.
Okay. Am I audible and visible?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. I am C. Doctor Sumanta Bhattacharya from Macau University and this is the second one. My today's topic is India's requisite to strengthen its national security emphasizing on the police and prison reforms to grab the growing security threats from internal and external forces. Mainly, I'm a research scholar from Macau University and I have one hundred eighty research paper, twenty-seven book chapters and patents. Let I come to the jump to the topic. For first of all, I thank you all the coordinators for their giving me the opportunity. Right now, India is facing a very administrative trouble. We know that police forces are doing their best, but the crime rate is increasing as newer modern-day cybersecurity to defense and other terrorism attacks is there and most of them are new terrorism, neo-terrorism, pseudo-terrorism types of attacks is happening in India. I mentioned over here that police reform and prison reform is very much needed. Why? As you know that in our India, the local police station has faced a humongous pressure as the less manpower. Same officer is conducting interrogation, same officer is conducting the force, same officer is also the take part of peacemaking. So it's very hectic schedule for them. Not only that, we must not forget that prisoners and the police officials, nothing but they are also social animals which approaches to the social is completely different to us, from us, so that we cannot reject themselves from the society. Our motive is to conclude them in society. The police reforms is needed for violence is only considered as the only means and the element of police force is need to be increased and well equipment will be needed and human safety in multiple areas of India needed to be improved. The second is why prison reform is needed? We are taking prison as a very much conflicted way because we are not considered prisoners in our society have less value. So if we start some MSME projects, some skill development project and some like this kind of project which collect revenue, it is very important for them and it's also helped them for providing our economy, a specific role in our economy. It is my chart for police adequacy index infrastructure. And second I go there is people who are asked there, this is under FCROL dot in, why police violent towards the criminal? Statistics, yes, yes, yes. My findings is this, I just conclude, about to conclude, it is a reason behind the prison reform. It is the state. And there is, I go further suggestion. We can also set up some insurance policies, some student, some educational policies for prisoners and police officials to upgrade their versions. Some family data scheme, some health data scheme, a modernized in health and weapon equipments also there. And we also include some, introduce some nutrition-based food health scheme for prisoners and also we can include some coordination from man to man, from urban rural for police communication. Now I go to the thank you part in the conclusion part. Before that, my conclusion is that police organization is a very absolute part of our governance. It is very important part in public administration after defense and prisoners, prison parties stand after the police administrations. So both these parts are very important for international, national security. If our internal parties actually not work properly, we cannot expect that our whole country or whole India can live in peace. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Sumanta. Next we have Nittika. Nittika, please go ahead and please summarize your paper in one or two minutes.
Sir, the last participant is not there. Thank you.
Kindly make the co-host to the Nittika.
Yeah, I did that. It is Rithika, right?
Nittika.
R I T I. Rithika Nikita.
Nittika, Nittika Singhal. She is the last presenter.
Okay, okay, okay.
May please request you to kindly allow me to share my screen.
Yes, yes, you can do now.
It's a humble request, it's a humble request, please summarize your paper in one or two minutes.
Right, if I could please ensure from you that is my screen visible and I am audible?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. So a very good afternoon to one and all present here and the topic of my type, this research is human security challenges in Punjab during COVID-19 pandemic. So these are the various human security challenges which I will be covering in my work. And this is the kind of introduction part and the human security, what kind of threats it addresses, the chronic and the sudden which we can see the disaster time and taking the Punjab as the case study, as Punjab being the agrarian state also known as spread basket of India and its economy is dominated by agriculture and both during the sowing time and harvesting time, we have the migratory labor over here. So what happened with the onset of COVID-19 with the sudden lockdowns? All the employment opportunities for migratory labors were shut down and they had various issues, the health issues. Also, some of them suffered from the COVID-19 and they had no place to reside and no better facilities. And they were only left with the option to rather leave the country in every possible way. So my research context is to study the security challenges in Punjab during the COVID-19. Basically, I'll be analyzing the migratory workforce during pandemic and the correlation between the impacts of COVID-19 and the human security and what were the root causes behind these security lapses and to prepare the robust sustainable plan in case we face such pandemic in near future. These are some of the research questions and the research methodology to.
Please go to the conclusion, we don't have much time.
Okay, so coming on to the conclusion part, so the human security challenges faced by Punjab during pandemic was an alarming situation both for the state government and civil society and there is a strong need to shift the focus from a response-centric approach to prevention and mitigation. So thank you. Over to you.
Thank you so much, Nittika. I think we are done with all the presentation. To end, I would like to thank Dr. Nanbhi and Vichrita and other team members who have all worked extremely hard for the other details of important aspects of the conference program and on the behalf of.